I'll try to keep this real brief. I just wanted to give some people that may not know a little bit of the history. We started looking at Mill Branch Park in 2020. In 2021, we purchased the first eighteen and a half acres. In December of 2021, we put out an RFQ for a master plan, which is when Beaver Water Channel Alliance, the U of A, and several other people you hear about later, Beaver Water District, got involved in helping to develop this comprehensive management plan for the park. It's a sixty-two-page document that we've operated under pretty well since the park opened in 2022. So park rules were adopted in October of 2022. They've been in place since then. We're here to address the planned extensive spraying of herbicides, bush hogging, clear cutting of the riparian buffer and some other areas within the park that is not consistent with this comprehensive master plan that was developed. And as of, what got my attention was I drove into the parking lot. You could see that it's probably a quarter mile creek, which is Zone Two in the maps that you can find online, has been mowed and cut right to the water's edge, almost the whole way between the, about where my rock is to the old road crossing entrance. And I mean, it's down to dirt in places and then the drop off of the edge of the creek. Should be a riparian buffer, used to be one. I know there used to be a lot of plants there that a lot of the pollinators used. We used to walk down there when they were blooming just to see the butterflies and think. All that's gone now. There are, there's evidence of bush hogging some pretty good size shrubs or trees or whatever you want to call them. And so that, that bothered me a lot. And I, what I want to do, I emailed all of you guys, appreciate you being here. So we don't want that to continue. I understand there's been talk about going all the way down to the story tree on that side of the creek. Terrible idea, in my opinion, as well as against our plan. There, there's arguments saying, well, we need to open up the entire creek so people can walk in and wade in it and stuff like that. And that's really not the idea behind Mill Branch, Mill Creek Park. Never has been. It's addressed, as a matter of fact, in that comprehensive maintenance plan specifically says that the clearly designated and visible marked access points will discourage the creation of road trails which can destabilize the riparian area and visual appeal. So they're saying, if you've got a pretty spot, like where that rock is, make a little place that you can see the creek, get to the creek without chopping down bushes and trees and things like that. I also would like to know, I have no idea who authorized that. There's a, I bought that bush hog when I was mayor. I think that's a nine-foot bush hog, if I remember right. There, there's been at least one pass made down between where the trail should be and into the riparian buffer along that whole creek to the storybook tree. As a matter of fact, there's one place I'm surprised it didn't fall in off the bank. It was so close. So also, there's a thing that says meetings, three seventeen meeting summary park maintenance and improvement plan. The attendees listed are David and Ivan. And anybody that thinks there's not extensive plans for spraying should read this document. They talk about using a boom sprayer on the trails, clearing all the fence rows, spraying up to the creek. Now, they say, but don't spray in the creek, just up to the edge. Same thing with some of the ponds. There's people that can tell you more about it than I can, really. But that's my concern, is that we have, we had talked in the past for several meetings about having some kind of ordinance to hold people to the plan. And as I recall, the mayor said, nobody's going to do that because they'd be violating the ordinance. And he's right. It violates ordinance two oh four, section two H, about harming native vegetation, woody shrubs, and I don't know what else. But it's, anybody can see that this violates that. So what I would ask you guys to do is to take some kind of action to prevent further destruction of the areas in the park. Now, there's, I've heard people say, well, it needs to be open. There's at least fifty acres of pasture in the park already. You know, then there's some ravines and things. But the amount of woods and woody vegetation, pollinator stuff, is not that much. And to clear to the very water's edge of that, anywhere along that creek, in my opinion, other than the places, like we said, the crossing, where you cross the creek, needs to stop. So I don't know whether it needs to be a resolution or ordinance, or how exactly it needs to happen. But it sure needs to happen. And I'd be glad to try to answer anybody's questions if they have one. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to the people that have more information than I do.
Max, do you know when this clearing happened?
I do not. That's first, my wife has had some medical issues, and so I haven't been to the park in a while. From driving by, look at it, I would guess within the last month or so. There's probably people here that could answer that exactly, but that one's not me.
And the assumption is city staff did that work?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Well, city staff, I don't know. It could have been volunteers, you know? But it's, it's very obvious. You don't even have to get out of your car, just drive into the parking lot and look toward the creek. It's very obvious.
Did you ask City Hall?
I, I've not asked City Hall. I was hoping City Hall would be here tonight, we could find out. Do you know, Cheryl?
I don't. I don't.
You don't know when or who?
I know who, city staff.
So David and Ivan?
Yeah.
So somebody probably authorized it.
But y'all should have gone to City Hall and talked to him about it.
Well, that's a great idea. It's too bad we can't do it right now. I just found out about this, went down there, what, three days ago?
It was a couple of days. Very short notice.
Very short, short notice?
For a meeting.
Well, yeah, we don't want any more clearing to happen. So, yeah, we're.
It's a special session. It's the day or two before the meeting.
Whatever day I sent that email, I could, I could tell you if it's important to you to know.
Running of Saturday, Max, I believe.
Saturday sounds about right, John. I'm not sure, but I.
I think it was Saturday I received it.
Okay, that's, that's the day then. So Saturday. Can I, anybody else? Thank you. Ken and Mary? Anything else?
Mary wants to go next, if she can. Yeah, that's fine.
I want to tell you a little bit of my background. I grew up on a dairy farm, and I worked at various nature centers, been a field director at National Audubon, and a state director with, for the education for Audubon. The reason I tell you all this, and growing up on that farm, when my grandfather, who was a master farmer for Arkansas, sold DDT and treated the milk barn and killed the creek there, and people didn't get to fish anymore and they depended on it. I've seen friends of mine who went to the Vietnam War, now dead, but from Agent Orange. The impact of pesticides is pretty scary. Now, I want to start first. I've been a volunteer for Arbor Board for probably almost eight years in Ocean, and then we started working on this. You need to get the perspective that this place, Mill Branch, is a headwater stream for Beaver Lake. And that's why Beaver Water was so excited about this project and helped us in many ways. These signs were made by Beaver Water. And the first thing that we talked about were riparian zones, to protect the crawfish that clean the water because they eat everything dead, and the darters that live there. And we have special habitat, the ravines, the geographically dissected areas of the park. We have the harsh geology that lines through the creeks and which is very, very porous. And it's something all of our citizens need to understand before they build or dump anything out there. And if you know anything about butterflies, many of them rely on the trees that grow along the creek to lay their eggs. And gray foxes. Max will tell you, the gray foxes live in hollow trees, in places that owls would live. I'll tell you all this simply because I want you to see how connected that park is. And when I went there last week and found that it was cut to the ground, the plum trees were cut, they grew in the riparian zone. And when I looked at it, where the water's already carving and going down and making a new break in there along the creek, I started hiking across. And then I see, now I saw this in the fall because I have, I have a bee. This is a calorie pear that was sprayed right next to the salamander pond. I don't know who did it, but I know I made a big deal with people that you don't need to spray next to a rare habitat where thousands of ring salamanders migrate in the fall. So, you know, in these places, there's not going to be any butterflies. There's not any wildflowers to make nectar or host plants in that half mile. The woodland sunflowers are gone. The wild rye is not there anymore. And when we talk about spraying, and as Max said, all you got to do is read that document that says spray and then mow. Get a boom sprayer and go along the trail. Now, I'm not saying they've done it that extensively right now, but they've done it in places. And I found plants right next to the creek that had been sprayed. They may not have been sprayed at this time, but they have been sprayed. Now, let's go back to the DDT story, where my grandfather sprayed his farm. He didn't have Google to, to look up the impacts. I challenge you, look up two four D. Look up remedy. Get the label. My son in the industry he works with knows a lot about chemicals. And he said, Mom, it says they're toxic to fish and wildlife. Google it, it says, don't get between twenty-five feet of water. And the document that's given to staff says you can spray to the water's edge. Now, it is not just fish we got to worry about, or aquatic vegetation, or aquatic insects. When your dog goes out there after somebody sprayed like that, they can walk it back in your house. Your children can get it on. And, and did they post before they sprayed for the public to know? I don't know. But I ask myself these questions. Do we have a responsibility to our partners, Beaver Water?
District.
District. Beaver Water Channel Alliance, that guy is a huge fan, not huge, but maybe six thousand dollars to write the reports, because we needed expertise, which enabled us to go for bigger grants, and all that Ken talked about that. But don't we owe it to them to keep those promises that we made, that this is a special place? It has these carst bluffs and wildflowers and a really in good shape headwater stream with darters in it? Let me show you, if you didn't see the picture of this orange-throated darter. This is a picture of the guy I caught, we're working with Ken, we had to go out there late at night and grab it. But, you know, everything with crawfish, and crawfish eat everything. Stuff you and I would eat, but it keeps the stream clean. Do you think that crawfish is going to survive spray? Or the darter? Well, what do we need to know about that? Remedy, I went to the mayor. For those of you said, did you go, I did. I asked him to argue with me. I said, things have been cleared down there. And he said, well, there's no law against it. And I was floored because I just didn't think anyone would do that, because it is in the comprehensive management plan. So then I saw the spraying document. And Russell told him, me himself, they use remedy and two four D. Now, if you read some of those things, it says, you know, this is not real toxic chemical, but two four D, the NRDC calls two four D the most dangerous chemical you've never heard of. Link is an endocrine disruptor, which means it can cause cancers and things like that. And there is a role for spraying. I'm not arguing that. You have to spray invasive, you have to do it real careful, and you need to wear waterproof gloves, you need to have highly trained staff, and it doesn't need to be near the creek. Back to this. NRDC, the danger of two four D. Exposure can decrease fertility and raise risk of birth defects. It sticks around in the environment. And if you or your child or cat have been in contact with plants recently treated, and how would you know? There's no flag. Contact a poison control center. That's what it says on the internet, by reputable sources like NIH and NRDC. And on the label of remedy, toxic to fish. So my point is, this is serious business. Don't be like, you know, my grandfather didn't know what he was spraying when he poisoned the creek. He was told by the chemical company, DDT was great. They sprayed it in my house, so it killed the mosquitoes and I got from caught from it. We don't want to look back and say, we could have, should have been more careful. We should have trained whoever's doing this. So I'm going to quit. These riparian zones, native plants, some of them go sixteen feet down in the ground. The little invasives and grass and things like that, they're about, like here in the turf. So when the water cuts, what's going to hold the soil? When that water gets up and roars through there, and I know Paula can say, that river can roar through there. Do we want it taking half the parks when it goes? Okay, I think I've said enough. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. My name is Ken Smith. I want to thank the council members. Goshen residents is a great turnout. And of course, to the staff for being here tonight. A living Goshen. There are really four points that I like to make. Max and Mary really covered those. You heard from probably one of the state's former best teachers in the state of Arkansas. And it's, so I'll let that go as, as is. But the, the first thing I'd like to provide to the staff, and I guess to the recording, is a statement, a document that I wrote for, and submitted to the Arkansas, or to our Parks and Recreation Commission at the April twenty-first meeting. The, the memo that I provided, the Parks Recreation Commission, is a document that summarized the encounter that Mary and I had with representatives of the State Plant Board. State Plant Board is an agency of the Arkansas Academy of Agriculture. And the first question they asked us is if we knew if anyone's spraying herbicide along the creek. But the agency received anonymous complaint. We said, we don't know. Were it asked, we said, well, if anyone did it, it was spraying, it was likely the city. Was a herbicide used? I hope not. Mary and I, as Max noted, and Mary noted, heard comments, did notice that streamside vegetation had been removed, eliminated, for hundreds of feet up along the creek to the storybook tree. And as I set up, prepared a summary of that encounter and my observations and gave the document to the Parks and Recreation Commission at the twenty-first report, at the twenty-first meeting. So that was first point. Second point is, and this is a little broader than what Max and Mary have addressed, is who should a resident go to with a concern or issue about our parks? I was told by a park commissioner that to report to the Parks Commission was an attempt to win hearts and minds because of my being unsuccessful and having my way with the city. In essence, I was doing an in-around. Now, you know, I consider the source and the thought and the sentiment behind it. But when I got to the actual Parks Commission meeting, the chair of the commission said the issue was with the city and not with the Parks Commission. Honestly, don't read ordinance one seventy-five like that. I read the ordinance, and it says this in the ordinance, that the Parks and Recreation Commission is advisory to the city council and is able to recommend rules and regulations deemed best for the management of the public parks. I will tell you, from those two individuals that spoke to me and told me I should have gone to the city, it appears that the Parks and Recreation Commission has passed much of its function onto the city, thus bypassing the city council. That is a real concern that I have, folks. My third point. The document that Max and Mary referred to in the meeting summary dated March seventeen, Park Maintenance Improvement Plan for Mill Branch Park, please read it. It relies heavily on chemical spraying of herbicides as a management tool for the park. The park's objective, first page, is to clean up the park by spraying and removing, and I congratulate this, I applaud it, invasive plants, but also for maintaining trails, spraying for maintaining trails, and preparing areas for recreational activities like disco. That is the objective. Quote, unquote. Throughout the document emphasizes spraying, as Max said, using a boom sprayer to cover trails and fence rows. Maintain clear fence rows by spraying is another reference. Spray invasive trees and shrubs. Spray up to the edge of the creek. That is a quote to the plan's credit. And there are some good things in the plan. I want to make sure you hear that clearly. It does caution to get sprayed directly into the creek. And the plan does target invasives like calorie pear and multifloro rose. I applaud those. Those are two very serious Chinese, Taiwanese, Japanese invasives to our state. However, the spraying plan also targets greenbrier and black locusts. And you say, well, gosh, those are real nuisance plants, but they are natives, and they are of importance to deer, rabbits, other small mammals, and many species of insects. The mowing, let me focus on mowing. The mowing itself, component of the plan, city's plan, is indiscriminate. Mowers chew everything and did. Wild plums, Mary mentioned, dogwoods, red buds, spice bush, witch hazel, sunflowers, ironweed, frostweed, wild rye, and pawpaw. Representatives of those plants are actually found in the streamside buffer zone that were mowed along Mill Branch. And by the way, as Mary has shown, do you really know how important Mill Branch is to the Upper White River and Beaver Lake as a source stream? Beaver Lake is the economic engine, by the way, for Northwest Arkansas. And do you know that streamside buffers and retention ponds are the best practice for reducing erosion, sediment, chemicals, and protecting water quality? The fourth and last point. You as council members, the city and its Parks Commission have an exceptional document for managing Mill Branch Park. Max and Mary have referenced it extensively. I have sent this report to the park commissioners, to the city, umpteen times. I have six emails in my packet here that say, please reference, here's this report. I have sent it till I'm blue in the face for them to read and to use as a guidance for managing in, in the park and just in general business. It provides tools, sound tools, techniques for protecting the park and water quality and the many special features that are in that park. It was indispensable, the plan was indispensable for me as chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission for two of the four years. And it was foundational to the preparation of the environmental review required by HUD that secured you eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that bought us fifty-three acres of land and built the new parking lot on the north side. We had to comply with sixteen federal statutes, requirements, and executive orders, and nineteen environmental factors that had to be addressed in that environmental review document. I will say this and believe it to my heart, that had that March seventeen document prepared by the city, if I had to have addressed that, I don't know whether it's draft or final, by the way, had it been in place, it is doubtful that the city would have been in compliance with at least seven of the federal statutes and environmental factors. And I'm going to list those. Endangered species, flood plain management, wetlands protection, conformance with plans, state and federal plans, soil suitability, unique natural features, and climate change. At best, the ER document would have taken additional funds. It took me nine months to write it as is. It would have taken longer. And funding would have been delayed well into late 2024. And at worst, had it not been accepted, it would have been determined inadequate. And I doubt we would have received funding. So, kind of in summary, this somewhat backs up what Mary and Max have said. I'm going to ask you to please disapprove, or amend seriously, that March seventeen park maintenance plan, particularly the broadcast spraying of chemicals along trails, fence rows, ponds, and mill branch. Second, second, establish permanent streamside buffer zones of at least fifteen to twenty-five feet on each side of Mill Branch. Fayetteville Streamside Management Plan uses twenty-five feet.
Near the stream.
Third, designate three public access points. They talk about access to the creek, I'm all for it, but let's be very specific. I would recommend Max's rock site, which is a beautiful place. Why the rock is there, why Max selected that spot for his rock. The Natural Stream Rock Crossing that Chuck Decova spent six thousand dollars. Mary and I spent two thousand dollars, and the city spent three thousand dollars to build that Natural Stream Crossing. That is a wonderful site for kids and families together, and they do, and I've seen them many times. The third site I would recommend is the Eagle Scout Stream Project Site that was restored. It was an old panel crossing, they had blown out the river, the creek banks, and it was restored by Boy and Eagle Scouts. And, and three great sites. Another ideal is consider conservation easement through the North, and work through the Northwest Arkansas Land Trust. They can provide much-needed management expertise to Parks Commission, the city. Or just throw out everything I've said to you, and then send the March seventeen document back to the Parks Commission and. back to the Parks Commission and charge them with developing a new plan to provide for public involvement and to bring a revised document back to the council review and approval. This approach follows ordinance 175 and was the process followed by the Parks Commission in 2023 for the mowing request that Luke and Emily Jost have during their third year, and the RFP process, and the restrictions and confines gathered within that contract. The council reviewed the mowing provisions, asked questions, and approved the contract through a resolution. That is a, that is a sound process that has worked many times for you. So, thank you for this chance. I have copies of my comments here for the, for you, and I look forward to hearing what other folks have to say.
Ken, I've got two questions.
Yes, sir.
Who was the Parks Commissioner that said you were supporting pulling an end around because you were calling?
That, that, okay, Max, or I'm sorry, Birds, ask me a question again, please.
Said one of the Parks Commissioners said you were pulling an end around because you didn't get what you wanted.
Yeah, Mike, Mike, that was not, yes, it is.
That was not an exact quote.
I actually have it in.
I've got the email. You can read it.
And then I have the, and then the chair, Danielle, basically before I even got to speak, said I should have gone before the city, and that's in, that should be in their meeting notes. You know, it wasn't a, you know, I was. I'll just stop there. You ask a question, that's my answer, and I have the emails to show it, okay? Anything else?
Well, yeah, a lot.
So, I think that, like, from what I've heard, I think everybody has really good intentions. There's nobody here that's wanting to do anything bad for the public of the park. Everybody wants to either make it a better recreational area or protect the environment, and both of those are, you know, very noble and very appreciated.
And can be done, both ways.
I think that we have to find the balance.
Right.
For sure, and I think that this has been very insightful, everything that you've brought up.
Nobody wants to wade through weeds to get to where they want to go.
Oh, I don't disagree.
Or dry, or walk through a hayfield out in the middle of the sun.
Can you go to the podium and say your name?
You just don't want to do that.
Cheryl, you need to record it.
Cheryl Memo.
So, with that said, I do think there's some things that we need to take action on tonight, just to pause on spraying near the river, say 25 feet pause until, you know, we can come back and get a better plan in place. And then also, mowing.
I believe the recommendation on the spraying though is further than 25 feet, is it not?
15 to 20 would be recommended to city officials.
15, and it's a recommendation.
So, we met with game.
Not a mandate.
We met with game and fish commission. We were advised after the environmental review, we met with game and fish commission, and game and fish commission advised no heavy machinery and no spraying within 300 feet of any water in the park. If you're going to spray within 300 feet or any heavy machinery, that you needed to get a hold of game and fish and let them know what your, like, your project was, and that game and fish needed to approve it.
Define heavy machinery.
Um, I, he, he did not specify what heavy machinery.
I mean, are we talking about excavators, bulldozers?
That would be a question for game and fish. That was what I, what we were told.
Tractor.
He said it was heavy machinery.
I don't consider a mower to be heavy equipment.
They said tractor, not mower.
And tractors, for that matter, depending on the size of the tractor.
Well, let's say the tractor the city, the city owns, okay, that they brush hardwoods along the roads and, and all of that, that's a big. I would think that that was followed, but then, Dan Brown.
Doesn't specify, does it? I don't think they use that in the park.
Can I speak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mike Memo, I'm one of the Parks Commissioners, and I'd like to first address your question with regard to the statement that I made. The concern that I had was that Ken and Mary seemed to be going around, trying to do an end around move, if you want to call it that, that's not the words that I used, but I think I used backroom politicking or something along those lines, because they were bypassing the very source of where they needed to take this issue up, with, is with the person that's responsible, the, the, the entity that's responsible for maintaining the park is the mayor and the city staff, and somehow, nobody has bothered to go over there and talk to them face to face to find out firsthand what the plan is. And so, all these misconceptions and misconstrued, construed things have come up that has really something that I consider would be solved very quickly with a quick meeting with the mayor to find out what it is and direct. I mean, why are we doing all this backroom politi, I consider this to be backroom politicking because the mayor is not here.
Yeah, and he was not.
So, why did we do this? Now, my understanding is directly from the mayor, that this Saturday, this Saturday cleanup is for the purpose of removing deadfall only. So, we're talking about trees that are in danger of falling over the, over the trails that could endanger somebody's life if they were having to walk under it when it fell. I think that's something that's worthwhile doing. And there are extensive limbs that have fallen off down by the riverbank that are going to clog up the, the, if they're going to run off into the, into the creek, and they're going to clog up the drainage areas, and it's something that we're going to have to go down into the creek and clean up at some point. Now, that's going to do damage to the crawfish and the little darters and all that stuff, too. And I don't mean to make light of what's being said, I think I'm as, probably as ecologically minded as the next person, but Goshen's got a lot of area where, along the twin bridges, along the rivers, there's a lot of areas that provide habitat for plants and animals. I don't believe that a few hundred feet of Mill Branch Park Creek on one side being removed so that people can enjoy with their children going down into the creek at whatever point they want. Walk along the side, be able to see the, 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 actually see the creek, which has not been possible. If you guys have been into the park, you've noticed that this stuff has grown up eight, 10 feet, and people can come into the park, pull into the parking lot, if they're not familiar with that park, they're, they're not even going to know that that exists down there. They're not even going to know there's a creek down there unless they walk down the creek and go to that one little crossing, which, by the way, was bragged about so heavily, about the money that was spent there that was actually built on someone else's property. So, I mean, you can see the, you can see the, the markings out there where it's been surveyed, and it's clearly on someone else's property. So, now, you know, that can be disputed. I would say that it, it should be proven, but the markings are out there right now if you want to go look at them. Basically, my point is, is that there's plenty of room upstream on Mill Branch for there to be undisturbed areas where all of this activity that's being brought up here as being critical to the survival of Mill Branch Creek, it, it can take place. All of that area up there, you know, kind of east of that area is virtually untouched and should probably remain untouched, but it provides plenty of habitat for that area. Now, another point is, that was brought up the other day, if anybody was out here on Saturday, I'm sure that the smell probably knocked you over because there was extensive spraying of chicken litter on a field very close to that area. Now, I, it was on private property, there's no ordinances against that, against that, nobody can say anything about that, but guess where that water runoff is going? Let's think about that. Now, let's talk about, okay, we cleared out a little area for people to be able to get down to the creek and enjoy it, and we've got all this stuff running off of these fields above the Mill Branch Creek that's running off in there. It's a drop in the bucket, people. I mean, that's my opinion. And if anybody's got any questions for me as a Parks Commission member, I'm just stating my opinion. I'm not representing the Parks Commission right now, but that is my opinion. As for the boom spraying and all that, that meeting that was recorded was done with AI, and we all know AI is not perfect, and I think it was misconstrued that boom spraying and extensive spraying in the park was going to take place. Spot spraying, absolutely, and I've heard Ken and Mary both talk extensively about how we should selectively be spraying some of these invasives. The other thing is, if you walk down the Mill Branch Creek, is that you will see all of these invasives all along that creek side. We've got all kinds of invasives down along there, which can't be removed unless you remove some of the other stuff, too. I mean, it's just impossible, from a practical standpoint, to remove that selectively without getting into it. I guess that's all I've got to say. Thank you for the time, I appreciate it.
I've got two questions.
Question.
All right, I come forward now.
Do you know, you, did you or any of the Parks Commissioners do anything to do with this meeting or the comments?
No, as far as I understood, this was a, an informal meeting that the mayor had with city staff. It was recorded with AI, and it was transcribed into this format. That's my understanding.
It was not adopted.
So, if you guys haven't seen.
It's not, it's not an official document, as I understand it.
It's not adopted as a part of it.
Two, two questions I have, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for your clarification to Ken and Mary's comments from your perspective. Do you feel as a Parks Commissioner that city staff or the parks have gone against the existing ordinance?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Second question, the cleanup, the sediment, is there any intent to spray anything?
No, sir. No, sir. My understanding is that there's not to be any spraying whatsoever. Any spraying that, that was done was incidental, was overspray that came through because of windy day or something along those lines. I don't believe that it was intended to do any kind of spraying along the banks within the, the zone that has been designated. I honestly don't believe that it's anyone's intention to harm this area. We all have the same viewpoint in trying to protect the park, but at the same time, the word park was used. We don't have a nature preserve. If we wanted it to be a nature preserve, then it should have been designated as a nature preserve whenever this was set up. That's my opinion. It's a park for people. People have to be able to access these areas. We want people to go down and want to visit these areas and feel like they can get down there in the creek with their kids and roam around down there at will without having to worry about their kids getting snake bit on the way down, or, you know, the greenbriers that we talk about are, that are so advantageous in that area are going to prick their kids' feet and, you know, they're going to get ticks and shiggers and all that, you know? There should be some areas there that people can get out of their car, they can walk to the creek, and they can play around there without having to walk a half a mile to get to an access area. That's my opinion. I'm sorry, you had another question?
Well, last question, and as a, as a Commissioner, may city staff, we know the mayor's not here, so for clarification, we were asked to, Colton asked to hold this meeting, I believe it was yesterday?
Saturday.
Saturday. And then, how I was informed was an email, and that we needed to do this before the park cleanup on next Saturday because there was concern of what may or may not happen on that cleanup. So, all your city councilmen are here, and my question is for city staff, whomever may know, is there a reason the mayor's not here?
My understanding is that he had prior commitment.
Okay, I don't know, that's what I was asking.
He wasn't given enough.
And he wasn't able to get here this week, so we had to.
That's what I'm asking, I, I don't know, that's the question. Thank you.
I mean, I would love that if he, if he was here, I understood that he wrote a letter that someone was to read, are you planning to read it?
No, I think that.
I've got it written.
Yeah, I just got made aware of this, so.
And maybe that'll provide some further clarification, and, and I can tell you, I've read the letter, and it, it states his position and the city's position much better than I have. So, thank you for listening to my, yes, ma'am.
I just need to clarify that I did go to Mayor Stroud, and I talked to him at the Arbor Board meeting about my concern about this cutting, and I talked about the spraying, not going into the Salamander Pond. I went to him first and asked for consideration about those issues.
Did you ask him to, to explain what his plan was for the park?
He told me, this was his response, he said there was no law that prevented him from clearing the riparian zones, and I thought that our partnerships, that this was part of a comprehensive plan to protect water and to process all the things that were happening, I was just surprised that he thought that that was a, a good thing to do.
I'm not going to dispute you on that, but I will say that I've had extensive conversations with mayor about this, and that does not sound characteristic of the response that he would have, that he would just simply say, there's no law against it, as if to say, I'm going to go down there and rip the place apart, and there's not anything that anybody can do about it. That's not what Mayor Stroud is all about, from my perspective, at all.
Until you cross him in some way, then that is the response. Everything's a boy request, there is no competition.
Sounds disorganized.
That's your opinion, thank you.
I have a question for the council. Does, does the city, does the council have a license? Are you licensed to spray? Has, has a city, you, whatever, who, whatever the entities, entity, entity is, do you have certification even for the spraying that's been done so far in the park?
The city has no license.
Okay, do, do, do your employees have certificates of training or from the state plant board? Because it was a state plant board that investigated, that was there, met us as we were coming out of the park, met us at the parking area, and, and I don't know the answer to that.
Can I, can I answer that, please?
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, my understanding is, is that city staff are now undergoing said training at this time to get certified. Up until now, the mayor has been using his license, his certification, whatever you want to call it, that he uses for his farm to buy certain herbicides or whatever, and has been applying, using his training as a means of training the employees on what to do. Now, there hasn't been a whole lot done at this point, is my understanding. I think the, the assertion that there's been extensive spraying in the park is incorrect.
That's my, my understanding is that extensive, but there has been.
There has been, yeah. And I think it's mostly been targeted, is my understanding. I don't think there's been any boom spraying going on up there. Thank you.
Well, regarding this document, which is an AI deal, okay, and, and this, get out to everybody, and then I, I understood that this, this could be true or not, I don't know, okay, that there was a maintenance plan for the park that's been approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission. I don't know if that has transpired yet or not, okay?
Not to my knowledge. Not to my knowledge.
What everybody's assuming is that this was the document, okay, that the city was going to follow, and that it was blessed by the commission, and with that, if that was the case, that this would have had to have been drawn before the city council, before it could be handled. That's.
Fair enough.
That's, that's the, the way it goes, okay? From the, from the ordinance.
And it would be great if the mayor were here to, to answer that, but I think a lot of the answers are gonna be in the letter that it's gonna be read later on his behalf, since he wasn't able to be here.
That's why I wanted to address this here and just to, since you're the only member of the Parks and Recreation Committee that's here.
Danielle had to work this evening. She would be here, would have been here, but she's running about an hour, she's about an hour out right now. She let me know that she wouldn't be here until eight o'clock, which hopefully we won't go that long.
Well, you are the only true member of the Parks Commission. Good to see you present.
Schedule a trail moment because that Saturday that I walked back there, the grass was open top of mine, but you couldn't really tell where...
You've been there a few, few days ago. I went down there to...
Let's pause for just a second. We've got...
Oh, I'm just, I'm just here leaning.
No, are you willing to speak?
Well, he's answering questions, so, and Max is still asking questions, so...
So, the park's been mowed. I think it was mowed on Friday, 'cause I was in the park last week cutting up a, a big limb that had fallen down by the spring house. And I got that all cut up down there on Friday and the, the grass had been mowed. Couple of days prior to that, I, you're right, it had grown up a little bit, but, but I think, you know, we're in the, we're in the mowing season. It's growing very fast right now, so it takes, takes quite a bit to, to mow that. I can make that statement because I've mowed it myself. It takes a while to do that, so...
Me, too.
On a personal note, can I speak in this? Can everyone hear me? On a personal note, okay, everyone knows who I am.
Yeah.
I don't know who you are.
You surely do.
I don't, really.
You don't, you don't, with the resemblance? I'm Russell's mom.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. And I'm very disappointed when I walk in and even knowing that this was such an emergency meeting, that you didn't work with Russell to let him have a chance to be here. I don't think you care. I don't really think it mattered to you. And this is a situation in the community, all the community knows this. All the community knows it's a political battle here. It doesn't really matter that you think you are doing it for the right causes, for your own agenda and preservation, because it's a joke. It's act, it's, it's just embarrassing as a community, a long time resident. People need to wake up, need to get your hat and head out of the wind, bow your heads and look up. And you might not know how to do that. Come, come see me sometime and I'll, I'll help you with that.
Well, ma'am, all due respect, like five of seven of us have full-time jobs. And the impression was, this had to be addressed before the cleanup day of Saturday. We all made it. So I don't know how, how your impression of we can't make it happen, seven of us made it.
Well, congratulations on, for that, for you.
And to add to that, I did, I did try to get Russell here. He just said that he was, he couldn't reschedule this week. So, he got in a, I was planning to reschedule a time he could be here one of these evenings this week for the cleanup, and he couldn't make it.
Before you made the meeting? Before you actually made this meeting? You talked to him? What?
That's not the, that's just the process. So the, the process is that it's a council meeting.
Oh, so you, you call the meeting, you get enough people that you know is gonna be here, then you let the mayor know?
Yeah.
And then he should arrange his schedule because you've decided, "Oh, it's an emergency. We need to clean this up because we have, we know who's gonna be here and we know who, how they're gonna vote. Because this is our agenda and we want it our way." It's political and you guys know it. You know what the majority of the community says? Goshen hadn't looked so good. It hasn't been ran so good in many years.
That's right.
Okay? There's, and then that takes heart and it takes people that care. And it's not about shining your own little whatever legacy if you think that's what it's gonna bring to you, because that's, it won't. It's not about one or two or a park committee, you know, that you're known for the rest of your life. Big woof. No, it's about the people. And if you're doing it for the people, this wouldn't have happened. I'm sorry. This is so disappointing. And as a mother, it breaks my heart. Because he grew up in this community, he loves people. That's why he went into nursing. If you ever seen him on his other jobs, he has a big heart. It's, it's not, he's not doing it for self-gain and he's not doing this for self-gain. He's not perfect and who is? But he is willing to work with y'all and talk to you. But he doesn't want someone going behind his back or talking behind him on his back, behind his back. And who does? And yes, maybe he does act out a little bit, but what are y'all doing? Do we need to just kinda like try to come together as human beings? And what does that take? We can't do it on our own. It takes Jesus. I'm sorry. It takes Jesus. Now, I haven't behaved very well. It's not, it's not Jesus-like way I've behaved today. Because my human side as a mother, I'm a mom bear, sorry. But I can pray for us. And I think Curtis could help me with that, too. We bow our heads. Can we include Jesus in our lives? Y'all wanna try it? Do you think this is inappropriate because it's a, a city meeting? You think it's inappropriate? Well, I think it's inappropriate that you all have been fighting Russell ever since he became mayor because he disagrees with some of your ideas. But he says, "I'm willing to work with you." Because he reads the law. He knows the law. And by golly, it pisses you some, some of you off because you don't. And you have done things illegal and you know it. And it's eaten you up and revenge. Revenge is not a fun thing to live with, getting back at somebody. It's not the way to do it. And we know how to get our heart right and that's through Jesus Christ, our Lord. So if you wanna say a little quick prayer, bow your heads. Father, we come to you now in the name of Jesus because we love you and trust in you and we believe you can change our hearts. But we do have to believe. We have to believe in you, Jesus. We have to give ourselves totally and completely to you because we love you and we wanna be a better person for you. And I ask forgiveness for my actions tonight, for not being a child and always being as humble as I should be. The Father, you know that right now what's been going on in these city walls have not been your heart's desire. And I notice just to get our hearts united. And Father, I just ask that you do that. And the ones that can, Father, just speak to their hearts and help them think of you tonight as they later head down before they go to sleep. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Give us guidance. Thank you. And forgive me.
Why won't Momma bear? Sorry.
I won't take up too much of your time. My name is Dot Neely and I am retired, but I was the education coordinator for Beaver Water District. And in the early stages of planning Mill Branch Park, I came out a number of times and walked the whole, the whole park area and saw the potential for the park as a great, vastly diverse area to enhance the community's contact with different types of habitats and geologic and, and plants and animals, all the species that are part of this microcosm here at Mill Branch. We saw the tremendous potential at Beaver Water District for this to be a, a teaching tool to help people understand all the interconnectedness of the land and water and all, all living species. So, the park has a huge treasure of natural resources to offer the citizens of Goshen and beyond. And I know a, a number of our partners, the Beaver Watershed Alliance, some of the Washington County Extension Agents came out. My friend Jennifer Ogilvy, who, who's head of the University of Arkansas Herbarium, was out to do, you know, an overview of the, the plant bank that, that's here, natural and invasive. And I know that, that a number of the environmental organizations and nonprofits really are excited about the potential of this park as a, a classroom for teaching us all about natural resources and the interconnectedness of things. So, that was my understanding of what Mill Branch Park would be. It would be kept more in a natural state. There would be trails established, that some would be mowed trails, some might be cinder trails or soft surface trails for people to be able to access and walk all the way around and through the park and access different areas. And that, that was my understanding and it was my understanding that, that Beaver Watershed Alliance did submit a management plan for Mill Branch.
As a recommendation.
That would be in keeping with best management practices as we've come to know them to, to get the best outcome for the environment while also allowing people to access the resources. So that said, that was my understanding in the beginning before the $880,000 was received and before Senator Womack came out and, you know, made a case for Mill Branch. And I was here when Senator Womack was here. Then the other thing I wanna say is, there are a number, I can think of four or five different nonprofits right now that do strategic volunteer invasive removal. And I have participated in some of those invasive removals. And there are very specific ways that you can selectively remove invasives without harming the native plants. And volunteers can be brought to you. My friend Becky Roark, who is the director of the Beaver Watershed Alliance, called me this afternoon and said she had talked with Mayor Stroud and that he was open to the best management practices for maintaining the park and other city properties. And she said she also offered for the mayor and anybody that was part of the city to attend an upcoming invasive removal workshop on, on her dime. She would waive the registration fees. So, let's, let's go forward, recognizing the treasure that, that y'all have and recognizing all of the support of numerous different nonprofit groups, Beaver Water District, University of Arkansas, herpetology, plant sciences, the, the herbarium, the, the school classrooms that bring their, their environmental studies kids out. There's, there's a, there's a huge collective of people that have a heart and interest for Mill Branch that will come in support of, you know, whatever y'all decide to do. It, it, there, there are strategic ways to remove invasives. Broadcast spraying does kill invasives, but it kills everything else. So, I encourage y'all just to consider these things. You may not have to make a motion or anything tonight. I think this, I understood this to be more of an informational exchange and I really appreciate y'all coming out tonight and I, I look forward to meeting Mayor Stroud. I haven't had the opportunity to, but my friends, you know, and the other environmental organizations have met with him and Becky did speak with him. So, let's, let's all come together and go forward in a positive way. I think it's, I think it's, everybody wants to do the right thing and we can have a win-win. That, that's what we work for. Win-win. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate you being able to speak.
I want to address one thing that was said there by you, Mike. You know, you said that you want kids to be able to go down and basically get to the stream and all of that. Teaching the generation that I do right now at the University of Arkansas, teaching college-age students, I would argue that one of the biggest issues they have is they have been coddled their entire lives. They have never experienced a thorn in their foot. They have never run into a copperhead. They have never had to explore to find something that's worth finding. So, I would make the statement that, you know, making an easy pathway for kids is not always the best way for kids to explore an area. You know, that we're seeing these societal effects.
Unfortunately, we have parents who coddle their children and wouldn't let their kids get anywhere near an area where they might get snake bit or get a briar in their foot.
Or ticks.
I'm not, I'm not, yeah, I'm not debating you, but I, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna make that kind of point out there that we need to have places where kids can experience these challenges in nature.
They do have to have somewhat safe access to it. That's my point, is we need more open areas there. We don't have to close it off completely. There's plenty of area on upstream that provide exactly what Ken and Mary are, are suggesting that we provide.
Let, let Paul finish, or...
You know, again, but the hazards that, you know, you can see, you can see a briar bush, you can see a snake. You cannot see spray that's been applied to something. And I think that that's a significant issue with the application of the sprays that's been done, is that nobody knows what has been sprayed, where it's been sprayed. And I wouldn't want, any child of mine, I wouldn't wanna have to explain to my kid why they're dealing with ovarian or testicular cancer as adults, that it was because they walked through a patch that had been sprayed that nobody knows about. So, that is a significant issue in my mind as to just not know, not having that information as public as to what has been sprayed, where, where it is safe to walk through the grass, walk through all of those areas if it's not posted, notified, anything like that.
Thank you. So, do we want to take any action tonight?
I think we probably, we probably also need to...
When y'all are ready, I've got, the mayor asked me to read a little. We've got public comments left here.
I just have a few notes. And your name's Dave Crown. What was the person's name? DNA?
Okay.
I'm starting to be on the Parks Board, so as soon as my annexation goes through, I will be part of Goshen. So I'm not there yet, but I have been attending the meetings. That 317 has not, that meeting note was not anything in our meetings, so I haven't seen it till we got the email with it. It didn't get adopted as a plan, so I don't think it was meant to be broadcast like that. I wanted to point out that a lot of the things that happen with the chemicals, my degree's in horticulture, it's what I went to the University of Arkansas for. A lot of the chemical processes that they're talking about with birth defects and things like that happen while you're exposed to the wet chemicals spraying at yourself. So, if you're not wearing protective gear while spraying, you are more likely to get those kind of, it's not, it's, once the, once the chemical is dry, it, the, goes down to almost nothing. You can't, and let, even eating it after it has chemical on it is very low toxicity. So, it's something to take into effect if it is, I mean, I don't feel like we should broadcast spray anything, but I also feel like selective spraying is necessary. To your point, there is a lot of poison hemlock around this, around Goshen period. It has become invasive in the last few years. This is not just, it is a neurotoxin in every form, from its seeds to its flowers to its roots, everything. My child was actually in the ER for eating it because it resembles, um, it resembles, um-
Queen Anne's lace.
Yes. So, you think it's-
Carrots.
It looks like a, like a native carrot and arsenic and so. But, you can even get, by touching it, it will cause rash, hives. So, it's in any form, in the tiniest, tiniest amount, it is bad for you. Most people don't know what it looks like because it looks like Queen Anne's lace. It looks like parsley. It is in every field from here to Fayetteville, you can see it on everywhere. It takes two years, the second year is when it flowers. When it flowers, it spreads by the wind. Every seed is poisonous, every, every part of it. So, something that we need, while I agree that kids need to be kids and learn, but if they don't know what it, what they're looking for, like mine wasn't, even though I have a degree in horticulture, he didn't know. And he ate it before I had a chance to really know. So, it's, it was in the park, it's all on, all along this area, it's on every, on every road that I drive on in Goshen. So, while we do want to protect the kids and then also let them be kids, we also need to take care of things that are way up on the list. Briers, yeah, they suck, but, you know, they're everywhere, it's part of nature, you're not going to die from it. The only thing they could do for my child is wait and see if he needed a ventilator for his lungs to shut down. So, this also kept, you can't burn it, you can't touch it. The only thing recommended by the University of Arkansas Extension Office is to spray it selectively. And you have to spray it over the years to get rid of it. We have been spraying it on our property since the kid took care of his, um, religiously every, every year to try to get rid of it because as soon as it goes to seed, you're screwed. So, um, I just wanted to bring that up because, again, to the kid point, kids aren't going to know it's, it's a neurotoxin. And it does need to be taken care of. And I think that's all I had.
Did your son blow it?
I have a picture, um-
He was the one who helped us to the hospital.
I have a picture of the poison hemlock that's growing right beside the creek.
He cooked it.
Huge plant.
I talked to Russell about that and said we need to immediately tarpe it. Tarpe can kill without putting chemical in the water, so. Black tarpe, clean it down.
It still comes back from the root and the seeds are still in the ground. So, you're still-
They're quite easy to tarpe over.
You can tarpe it, but when it is the entire length of that field, you're not, you're tarped, what else are you covering as well? All those little things that you're trying to say.
I'm only talking about these two that you mentioned about alone as well.
So, those are mine. Do what you may.
Thank you.
That's just one example of other species of invasives that are down along the creek as well. I've got pictures.
So, do we want to take any action tonight?
Do you want to read the letter first from Mayor?
Please.
Okay, this is a letter Mayor emailed to me this afternoon asking me to read to you all. It says, "I would like to start by saying that there has been much misinformation being provided regarding the city staff maintenance of Mill Branch Park. Let me start by saying, we have two truly dedicated infrastructure and facilities management employees who have worked diligently to help promote and maintain Mill Branch Park as directed by both myself and the maintenance plan adopted by the Goshen Parks Commission and City Council. In the adopted maintenance plan, it identifies the city's staff responsibilities under four areas of focus. First is primitive trail walk area, where staff is responsible for mowing a five-foot to six-foot path during mowing months. Second is ADA trail walk areas. Currently, we do not have anything structured in the park. Third is wooded areas where staff is responsible for inspecting for trees requiring trimming, scheduling trimming, inspect for invasive species, develop plan for removal, execute removal plan, inspect for dried fallen timber, develop plan for removal, execute repair plan. Lastly, the kiosk slash lookout area, inspect for damage, develop plan for repair and execute plan. This continued maintenance of Mill Branch Park takes approximately two days per week of the city's infrastructure and facilities management team of two employees working eight hours per day. This is over fifteen hundred hours of city paid time maintaining Mill Branch Park, representing twenty-eight percent of this department's annual time available. These two men are not arborists, biologists, botologists, ecologists, naturalists, or otherwise particularly educated regarding the management of riparian zones or other significant ecologically important features of Mill Branch Park. They have been provided with the comprehensive management plan for Mill Branch Park and have reviewed most of this with me personally. I, like my staff, are doing our very best to ensure that we are conscientious about how we, as the city, proceed with park maintenance. After discuss, discussing with city staff and park commissioners, it was identified that there had been numerous complaints from citizens regarding last year's maintenance of both trails and the riparian area. There is an invasive and dangerous, dangerous plant, poison hemlocks, which have proliferated along the northern aspect of the north entrance and is spreading rapidly to the water's edge of Mill Branch Creek. It was also identified that there are two extremely large sycamore trees that are dead along the northern aspect of Mill Branch Creek, dropping large limbs close to where citizens could be recreating. The fallen limbs have started to accumulate and were believed to be creating a hazardous area where citizens could be injured. As part of our prescribed maintenance plan under the wooded area section, we inspected the area requiring trimming, inspected for invasive species of plants, where we also identified several species of invasive plants requiring removal and developed a plan for their removal. The scheduling of the tree trimming and/or removal has not been completed thus far, but has been discussed as to a timeframe for the maintenance. We also discussed our desire as set forth in our environmental review to help prevent soil erosion along the creek bank and the riparian zone as a whole. In further evaluation of the riparian zone along Mill Branch Creek, it was identified that there are a significant number of invasive species causing damage to the riparian zone. This damage is related to the invasive species overgrowth, thus not allowing for native or erosion-resistant species to propagate and thrive. A goal was set to clean up the area around the creek bank, removing invasive species so that we could plant native foliage, foliage, such as sweet spire, chokeberry, beautyberry, serviceberry, spice bush, dogbane, ozark witch hazel, and wild hydrangea, all of which should help to preserve the natural environment and bring stability to the creek bank in times of flooding. The accusations that have been made by Ken Smith, Mary Smith, and Max Floyd are simply inaccurate and not representative of the work being done by both city staff and our parks commissioners. Ken and Mary Smith made their concerns known at the recent Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, but have not discussed any of these concerns directly with my sat, myself or city staff responsible for their perceived damage to the area along the north side of Mill Branch Creek within the riparian zone. Yet, these individuals have rallied agencies involved in the development of the comprehensive management plan for Mill Branch Park based solely on their assessments without having even discussed their concerns with city staff or myself. As the mayor of Goshen, Arkansas, I want to work with all agencies that have dedicated their time into providing the city of Goshen, Arkansas with this fundamental tool for our parks' maintenance. I also want to be clear with all citizens and agencies involved in Mill Branch Park that the statements of these three individuals have been made without any regard for the work the city has been doing to maintain and improve Mill Branch Park. Nor has there been any attempt to discuss or resolve their concerns with the mayor's office or city staff regarding these allegations. I would encourage anyone considering becoming involved in this matter to please keep an open mind and not jump to conclusions based on the concerns raised by three disgruntled individuals. This does not mean that we may not make a few mistakes along our journey to maintain and improve Mill Branch Park, but we are committed to protecting and preserving our natural environment. I believe this can be accomplished while still listening to the concerns of all citizens on both sides of the discussion regarding Mill Branch Park's future and best practices for its management. I would also like to note that there was no attempt by the city council members who called this special session to determine if I would be available to attend this meeting prior to scheduling and putting out for public notice. Respectfully submitted, Mayor Russell Stroud.
Thank you. So, do we want to take any action tonight?
He mentions a plant that was adopted by-
Yeah. That's what I was referencing. That's what I was asking when I asked, like, when I asked you about the plan that was approved or adopted by the Parks and Recreation Committee.
I don't believe that that's the comprehensive management plan that you are referring to.
And that's what I was getting at, because I don't know, I haven't seen a plan, has anybody else, you know, on the city council? I don't remember one being presented to us.
It's, you have it, John.
Not too distant future.
Are you, have a master plan that has not yet been approved?
No, there's a master plan and then you should have a comprehensive maintenance plan.
Comprehensive maintenance.
It's the thickest one, it's like sixty pages.
Yeah, that was the previously adopted.
I only, I was only able to print one, there you go.
Are you talking about this?
Yes, sir, that's the comprehensive maintenance plan. And then there's a maintenance plan that I also printed out for you.
The maintenance plan is something-
Two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. But the maintenance plan was not adopted by Parks Commission. It was just a memo between city staff.
No, no, this is the one from two thousand twenty-two.
This was in twenty twenty-two.
Yes, sir, that's what I was putting out.
The mayor's referencing.
So, he's referencing this.
I, I can't speak for him, but I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
That, that's-
Yes.
We have a master plan that we saw at the last council meeting and it was read for the first time, as I recall. So, it has to be read.
Uh, we read the ordinance, we were waiting for plan updates to be done on the twenty twenty-five plan.
No, written ordinance that sets out the rules to adopt that.
Yeah.
But not the actual adoption.
Right. Kind of was read, and that was read for the first time you said the class meeting.
The ordinance, I just went off memory, is just to set a process in which you all would have adopted master plan and has later been adopted.
Because this, this has been going on for-
Well, we didn't get the, the updated copy of that before our meeting last time.
No, but it's, we're working for-
The plan, yes, it's been going on for a while.
Yeah, it's been like six months. This has been brought to-
Can I just make comment before we get too far away from the mayor's letter?
We can, sorry. You go ahead, Matt. I just wanted to say that I, I did email Russell the same day that I emailed everybody else. Statement about not making any attempt to, I never heard back to the statement, so I just want to clarify that.
Mary had mentioned earlier that she has spoken with him as well.
Well, and that goes to my confusion, maybe in my comments earlier that, uh, do we go to the city or do we go to the Parks Recreation Commission? You know, for raising issues about parks? If not, the Parks Recreation Commission instead of, instead to the city, why have the Parks Recreation Commission? So, that's, you know, as I mentioned in my opening comments, I prepared a memo that went to the Parks Recreation Commission for their meeting. So, that's the background to the-
And Russell was there to document the agenda.
So.
Can I just say, the, the, the city council hasn't given the Parks and Recreation Commission a mandate to make policy. We are an advisory committee. We research for grants, we come up with ideas that, the things that, you know, we dream about what the park can be and we advise accordingly. And either it's, our advisement is, is taken or it's not. So, I think we have, we play a vital role because we dedicate our time strictly to the parks when everybody else has got other things on their minds. But, that's, we're, we're not there to, to make rules and, and, you know, enforce things. We're there to advise. And then, it's up to you guys and the mayor and the city staff to come up with a plan to carry that out. And I think that's what they're doing now.
I'll, I'll jump in, Ken and Mike. The way I, and I don't have it in front of me, the ordinance that established the Parks Commission, but it is an advisory role, um, but it's to advise on the development of the park, which has happened up till now, but also the ongoing maintenance of the park. And so, on one hand, Ken, I think to answer your question, maybe either or. Um, I mean, the Parks Commission, if you take a complaint or a concern to the Parks Commission, all they can really do with that is consider it and advise the council however they need fit. But at the same time, you could conceivably ask your council members, Burge or John, make it an agenda out of a council meeting. I think it would be appropriate in that manner as well. I think it can go either direction to answer your question.
Okay, and, and remember, I'm just going to the ordinance itself.
And you may have, I don't have it in front of me.
Well, I, I have the, one of the, or several permit sections, but where I read the, that it is, these are quotes from ordinance one seventy-five, that it is advisory to the city council and is able to recommend rules and regulations deemed best for the management of the public parks. You know, I'm just saying that the, uh, when Max is mayor and the beginning of the Parks Recreation Commission, we brought everything after consulting with Max or getting advice, we took everything to the city council, uh, before we did anything. The mowing contract I mentioned specifically earlier was an example of that. The, uh, ordinance two oh four, we shared our draft ideas with the city council. Everything we did, we went to the city council. And so, it was, and any complaints that came to the Parks Recreation, that came about parks, came to the Parks Recreation Commission and we, we addressed them there and then we took our recommendations to the council. That, that was my experience, okay? So, that's, that's what I'm referencing.
I just don't think the way it's all organized and set up that it's mandated that it go through that necessarily. I think there, those meetings are open to the public and anybody can come and voice an opinion or concern. And that's a, you know, venue to do that, but you could also do it at council meetings.
Okay.
Obviously, at the end of the day, the council is going to make the decisions.
Right.
The Parks Commission is not making any, any decisions.
That's true. That's true.
So, in my opinion, I think as Brian said, it could go either way. But if you have much more park knowledge than I do, I'd love to go take a kids' park class. Like you and the commission have much more knowledge than I do. So, if you would come to council, I would, in my opinion, would say send to the Parks Committee and have a discussion to bring back an advisory opinion or a recommendation.
I believe that's what's happening, Burge.
Well, hopefully it does happen. Hopefully, it does happen as we move forward. I think we, we have, maybe we got spoiled. Okay. The fact that in the beginning with, with Max and with Ken and Mary, um, they came and presented ideas that they wanted to do and asked for the council's question.
A resolution.
A resolution. Yeah. Okay. I haven't seen that in two years. And that's probably a breakdown someplace along the line, Mike, and I'm not, one finger today.
No, I, can I just say one thing? It's a new administration, and, uh, the mayor has a lot of power to decide what the Parks Commission or the Planning Commission, whoever it is, does, and how much of that responsibility he and city staff want to take on. That's, that's, that's up to him to do that. So I think if you're seeing that there are some changes from what it was in the previous administration, and I'm not, I'm not saying it was good or bad, I'm just saying that's how it was, that Parks Commission was given a lot more latitude to, in the decision, actual decision-making process. And so from that respect, I think maybe you're right that, um, you know, it, it was different, maybe it was better, maybe, maybe not, maybe this is the way it's supposed to be. But yeah, definitely different, and I think that's up to the, to mayor to decide how that's, how that's done. I'm not saying that it's good or bad.
Then, then what I, then I, what I would say is, if that's the case, and that's the way they want, then the ordinance, or ordinances have to be reviewed and rewritten.
That's the only, I just wanted to, just as a cautionary statement, the mayor doesn't have any authority to do anything other than what the council has adopted informing the commission.
I'm sorry, I misstated, that's what I meant to say.
I just want to make sure there's no confusion.
Yeah.
As far as the, the duties that are assigned to a certain commission, that comes from this body, not, not the mayor's office.
Yeah, I, I would just like to, sorry, Calmaker, I live at my fifty-one freeway, just down the road here. I was a past member of the Parks Commission, as you all know. This issue was brought to my attention about two weeks ago. I've been really busy with planting gardens and some farm stuff this spring, so I haven't gotten up to the park in about a month. It was brought to my attention, I went and checked it out, and upon pulling into the park, it was quite striking, the level to which the vegetation was removed all the way down to the creek's edge. As you all know, I'm a pretty, pretty hardcore, like, I like the environment. I also have worked in, developed recreation for seven years prior to leaving that field, to, to go back to traditional engineering. This issue in particular is, is an age-old in the recreation versus conservation debate. It's nothing new, we're not the first entity to go through it, and it's something that landscape architects and other professionals spend a lot of time thinking about. It's how to balance conservation in an area while still managing recreation so that everyone can view those areas. I feel, it's just my opinion, that this plan did a great job of addressing those, and this plan can be changed, and there's a process for that. The vegetation removal that was done was not in line with that plan, and it certainly was not in line with the management, the best management practices for vegetation management in the park. That was, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe adopted by reference in the master plan and the management plan back in two thousand twenty-two. So there's like four documents, so it's kind of confusing. So, I mean, not only is the buffers, were they removed, spraying, I can't say whether or not it was sprayed, I didn't see, I wasn't there with enough time to see it, but the buffer areas, and especially the time that it was done, in early spring when birds are nesting, and it's when the native plants get their first shoot of growth, and when you cut it right then, it can be pretty damaging. So I think the, the idea of just clear-cutting the area and replanting natives is, is pretty harmful in terms of the best management of it. In terms of accessing the creek way, one of the challenges that parks face is by having a trail really close to a roadway or what's called like a pole point, a draw point, is that everyone then forms their own path to the draw point, which in this circumstance would accelerate erosion along that creek over a period of time as usage increases. And in my years of traveling over seven states consulting on trail design, that's one of the most common things that we would see in parks, where parks directors or maintenance people would say, look at this erosion, I wish we had known about this twenty years ago when we started developing these parks. And a lot of that was because there were old horse trails, or old farm trails that just kind of developed over time, and there wasn't a lot of thought, or time, money, or effort that was put towards the thought. And I think that we have that opportunity now, and that opportunity is to, to make sure that this is done right. And for now, I think the best thing we can do is pause and make sure this doesn't continue, and revisit what the goals are of this effort, and how to best address it within the confines of our plan. So that's, that's my thought on this. I think all things can be accomplished with, with or enough planning. I, I do share a lot of the concerns that were shared this evening about the erosion of input. Without going too far into detail, you know, I feel like there's, it's endemic that if challenges are brought to city staff, that as a member of a commission, you're pretty quickly taken out of the loop, and, and it subverts the, the function of an effective advisory count, body to the council. That's ultimately part of the reason why I chose not to continue on the council, it felt pretty, pretty useless, to put it bluntly. And I know everyone doesn't share that view, and I felt as a professional, it wasn't in my best interest to continue, which is really unfortunate, because I really enjoyed my time serving in the city, and I hope to do so again in the future. And I think in a, in a private setting, I'd love to talk more about that, but I'll just leave it at that for, for right now. Thank you.
All right, so do we want to take action?
Any other comments?
Let me go back to something I said earlier, and I think we're all searching for a way forward, maybe. Am I right? Yeah. I'd really like to see the, that March seventeenth document, and to be sent back to the Parks Commission, have them do due diligence, work through the document. There's some good things in it, some good ideas, capture those, but use that document, use the comprehensive management plan developed by Beaver Water Shield Lights as your guidance. It covers nine zones in Mill Branch Park, nine specific habitat types, and it has recommendations for each one of those. Guys, it doesn't get any better than that. This is a, I want to call attention to, this is a recreation plan. The city spent ten thousand, is that right, Max?
That's right.
Yeah. To John Bidniki, who is one of the foremost landscape architects in the state of Arkansas. He was head of the State Outdoor Grants Program. He developed the recreation plan for Mill Branch Park that shows kiosks, stargazing, trails, which was a big issue, areas to be used, areas to be protected. He followed the comprehensive management plan provided by Beaver Water Shield Lights. The Parks Commission has plenty and sufficient information to take the city's, whatever that thing is, the A-one document, March seventeen, take that, work with it, and come back to you. Come back to you. The master plan that you were talking about, Paula Goldpala, is a much broader document. It's about parks in general for Goshen. It takes in, it takes into account fishing down at the twin bridges, what we might do in the future. It talks about trails in Goshen, about, if you remember the idea of having a trail network within Goshen, they can tie to the incredible trails that, what, several hundred Mike Watters used this weekend? It gets into that kind of thing. That's, that's the big overall vision that Chuck and I and Kyle and the Parks Commission now is working on with you. Don't confuse that broad vision with a management plan for Mill Branch Park. You got to look at, it's, it's a subset. So for that subset, Beaver Water Shield Lights' plan, the document that we just got our hands on just the other day, I didn't, I asked about it for three days, and nobody knew anything about it, and it finally appeared in my email box, and I looked at that, and I said, that's a chemical spray plan. I mean, I'm sorry, that's what it is. So, but there's some good ideas in it, and it's targeted some things that need to be targeted. So, you know, that's my suggestion, that, in my mind, that's a way forward. That plan that comes back to you from them needs to have, you know, fifteen to twenty-five feet buffer zones, it needs to target invasives, that sort of thing, those things can be addressed. So that's my thought for what it's worth. I don't, is that a help, perhaps, kind of a way forward? You know, I'd put it back on Parks Recreation Commission, have them come back to you and present a document to you. Have them put the work in on it.
Cheryl Lemon. So my thoughts on the park is that it needs to be more of a people park. I did not sign up or vote for a nature preserve in the city of Goshen. You know, I think both can be achieved, but when I go for a walk out in the park, all I can see is weeds growing up beside the trail that is taller than me. I can't see the creek at all because of all of that. You can't go off the trail because of those weeds growing up, and I realize those weeds are pollinator plants, and they are very beneficial. We've got a hundred-plus acres of this stuff. We've got a hundred-plus acres of trees. You think that a couple of trees being taken down has ruined the habitat of birds not being able to find a nest? They're very resourceful. We've got a bird nest up on top of our garage door right now, you know, and we've left it because it's got eggs in it, you know? But did we want that there? No. So they're very resourceful, they're going to find a place to build their nest. So I'm just asking for a park that I can take my grandkids to, that they can play in the creek, they can run through the fields, play in the water, and they learn by doing that stuff. They don't learn by just walking through a hayfield. You just don't do it.
I grew up walking through hayfields.
I'm sorry, in Arkansas summer, you don't want to be in a hayfield.
Why they make it spray?
Just for, for a way forward, and you're asking for a way forward, and I think the primary concern was, you know, this cleanup that's coming up, and whether or not there's going to be spraying. I can definitively say that there will not. As far as clear-cutting the riparian zone around the creek, no, that's not the plan. The plan is to go in there, remove some of the dead fall from the trees that are, have, you know, fallen limbs down next to that area, and to possibly take down a tree or two that's dead that could present a hazard. I, if, if y'all need to do something other than, than that, I, I can rest your mind in knowing that there's not going to be a, a great deal of plant removal from the stream sides on May third. All right. So do we want to take action? I would recommend a pause of twenty-five feet near, near creek until we can get this master plan in place and kick this back to the Parks Commission for further discussion and recommendation.
I still have a little bit of trouble just that our city employees that's dealing with hazardous, you know, those spray chemicals are hazardous, I don't know that they have received the appropriate training to use those chemicals in a safe manner that is going to be protective to human health. I do have a bit of an issue, knowing that our city employees are not properly trained individually. I understand the mayor has, you know, herbicide insecticide application permitting, but he's not the one physically there doing the spraying himself. And, you know, mistakes get made, you can get hurt. The chemicals are nothing to be trifled with. I mean, even, you know, I know most people don't bother to read the labels before they get out their roundup, but, you know, we should be. And as a city entity, you know, we need to be toeing the line and making sure that we're following rules and regulations as well. And I don't feel like if our employees are not trained to do spraying, that they should be doing it. That's my perspective.
So do you want to do a pause on spraying?
Well, let's, I don't disagree, but I also heard Dave loud and clear, my channel would go pick your up here.
Yeah, I understand that too, and I do understand your concerns, but, you know, if they get certified, then yeah, let's go through that. But, I mean, you know, and I don't know where we stand on the legal side with that as well. I mean, do you have any input on that?
Yeah, I, I think it's all, well, it's, no, I don't, I don't know all, I, I think ADQ is involved, or would be.
State Plant Board.
The State Plant Board, but I don't know what our certification process, I'm not familiar with that at all. Obviously, if there's licensing involved, if the city needs to make sure that we are in compliance with those, those requirements are. So, yeah, my advice is that whatever city staff is doing, clearly needs to be in compliance with whatever state certification requirements are, licensing requirements, et cetera.
And we haven't, we haven't, as a city, I don't think we've received a letter back from them addressing what they are, what their findings were, and what, if any, repercussions there were on, for, for the city to these, is it Plant Board?
Yeah, and I, I mean, frankly, that's something we just have to deal with at the time, that's not...
I, I understand, I understand, but that's what I'm saying, we don't know what the outcome is of that at this, at this juncture. We'll have to deal with that. I mean, we're, depending on what they do and what they say, there could be very heavy ramifications to the city because of the grants that we got from, like you said. Mary?
I'm particularly distressed over the loss of the riparian zone, and I would like to hear from the city council if you have a commitment, if that to be left alone, allowed, you know, made to regrow and replanted as best.
Mill Creek is the best part of that park. Mill Creek is the best part of that park and the springhouse. It's the, and why not show it off? Why not let people see it? Replant it with plants that are advantageous, that people can still see the creek, that aren't ten feet tall.
I think we just have to go about it in a responsible way.
Yes.
I don't, I don't think that we need to go down there and just throw everything down.
I don't think anybody wanted to.
Without a plan in place.
Well, but the image has been done, are we going to commit to let...
Replant it.
To replant it with native stuff?
Yes. There is a commitment. There is a commitment.
Cheryl, let her talk, please.
But, you know, when you talk to anybody who's doing streamside protection, you know, limit the... you know, limit the amount of access to the creek. Now, people can walk in and see it, have it at Max's Rock, let the Parks Commission find another one in there. But just continuing to raise it to the ground will mean a lot of erosion, will have no pollination. You know, I, I want to know that, that we are gonna be committed to do right by the creek and that. Because you'd be killing it, it's, it's a lost resource.
So, I'm gonna recommend the pause on twenty-five feet within that creek.
Let me, let me say that we have a, we have a resolution that we can, that, that we can read in title only and see what everybody thinks. Vote on it. And I think it can, I think that it can.
Vote for a first reading?
Uh, no.
Do a first reading or are you saying adopt the resolution?
Adopt the resolution. What kind of resolution?
What resolution?
That would be a temporary, well, we can, I'll make a motion to read the resolution in title only.
What is the resolution?
Read the whole resolution.
Yeah, what is the resolution?
John, we haven't.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just saying that, you know, we haven't had a chance to have this published to us individually to look at.
Yeah, I haven't seen this. Do we want to read it in full?
What resolution?
Resolution.
I'll make a resolution to read the, to read it in its entirety.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Either.
Right? All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
My reason for that, no one's seen it. I think the voters have seen it.
Well, that's why we want to read it.
And the city should, the citizens should see it.
That's what I said.
We should see it too.
We didn't see it until.
Yeah, we can't see it until.
I have it right out, I don't think it's fair to.
Can you delay it until city council?
I don't know, but I don't know.
That's why I made a motion to read it in its entirety so that everybody could hear it.
All right, we didn't get the best. So, what I'd like to do is just get a pause, a pause in place until this can go back to the Parks Commission and we can get a plan in place. I think that it's better not to do damage right now than to continue. We've got nothing to lose. If we just wait. If we just wait, we've got nothing to lose. There's no rush to cut anything down with, with that, by that creek.
There's no rush to cut anything down or to spray it.
Yeah, or to spray anything. But that'd be my recommendation.
So, what does the pause mean? What's your recommendation for the pause?
I would say, pause non-targeted chemical spraying within twenty-five feet of riparian zones. And pause clearing of riparian, riparian zones.
Did you say non-targeted spraying?
Yeah, I think that if you see polio limb off down there, then you need to get rid of it.
Some of that's right next to the creek bank.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And can I just point out that twenty-five feet is well beyond the distance from the creek bank that we were mowing before. Prior to the, the recent clearing that has taken place. Twenty-five feet is, that's a great distance from, from the edge.
Well, into the existing trail.
I think that I'm just being cautious. I think that there's no rush in clearing it. We're gonna be back here next month to discuss it and we can lift the pause once a plan's in place.
So, would that pause preclude the cleanup day?
Well, there was no, no chemical spraying.
Yeah, there's no, they'll still be able to do the activities that they were planning to do, from what I heard.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if we can find volunteers that are willing to wade through the brush and get ticks and shiggers in the process of clearing out.
Or get hit with hemlock.
I mean, if we can't, like weed eat around the areas where we're removing some of the, some of the tree limbs and things like that, then I don't know that we're gonna really be, be able to get volunteers to.
I mean, there's.
Are you talking about this weekend?
I'm talking about this weekend, yeah, this weekend.
So, you're, you're planning on having people come out and weed and weed eating, do all of that before this weekend?
No, we were planning to have people come out and remove limbs and dead fall trees possibly that are overhanging the trails.
But then you said that you weren't going to get volunteers in, it sounded like for this weekend, that you're gonna do all the weed eating and everything before this weekend.
No, 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 no. No, you, no, sorry, I, I misstated that, I guess. What I meant to say was that in order to remove some of this dead fall, and you've already got weeds growing up around a lot of this stuff. So, in order for people to get in there and remove some of this dead fall that we're planning to remove this weekend, they're gonna have to wade through the weeds and they're gonna get loaded with ticks and shiggers and that kind of stuff. So, if we can't do a, a minimum amount of weed eating around the areas where we're gonna be removing this material, then I don't know if we're gonna get too many volunteers that are gonna sign up for that type of duty.
Yeah, and I guess, I'm not too worried about volunteers not doing something that we don't think should be done. So, I think that we just need to do a pause on what we, what we think needs to be reviewed. And we can get back to it once those concerns have been addressed.
So, but, does that mean that you want to cancel the cleanup day?
From what I heard, you were removing some downed trees. That's not, that's, I don't want to stop anything that you guys, what you'd mentioned that you were doing didn't sound like it was gonna be an issue. But it kind of shifted and now you are planning on weed eating it around the creek, so.
Well, all I'm saying is I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna wade through a bunch of rambles and weeds to get to a tree that needs to be cut down and get loaded up with ticks and shiggers that I may end up with Lyme disease in the process of doing my volunteer work for the city. And I don't think a lot of other people would either.
Yeah, I mean, we can't just remove all the plants to get the limbs.
So, we cancel Saturday.
So, Saturday's canceled. Let's just ca, let's just say we're canceling Saturday.
If, I don't want to cancel Saturday at all.
Well, I mean, that's what we have to do.
We've got a hundred acres of park that needs maintenance. Most of the area of the park is not near the creek. So, we, we could shift those volunteers to an area outside of the creek. I think that would be very appropriate for this weekend.
I'd like to say that I, for one, will be volunteer on May third and will be willing to go into weeds and pull limbs out and to help in any way possible. I've done this for four plus years already. We've dealt with weeds, we've dealt with tics, we've dealt with whatever you name. We've been out there in the middle of it for four past years and I'll do it again. Okay? So, I'll, I'll be there whether they have it or not.
Last time I volunteered, it was with a, a skid steer tearing trees down left and right and everything else that went along with it, so.
There was Tree of Heaven, one of the most invasive.
And it took a lot of stuff.
Why are we making the dissemination between the two? A lot of other stuff was getting taken out at the same time the Tree of Heaven was being taken out. That's my point. I'll shut up.
Couple of things that takeaways that I, that I hear is the buffer zone specifically around water be it the creek, be it the pond, right, within twenty-five feet.
Just to clarify that, recommendation Ken said was fifteen to twenty. And if the city available is twenty-five.
Uh, yeah, it's fifteen to twenty. I forgot, well, the message, you're correct, okay?
So, I think.
I had to go back and look my notes.
What Mike said, you know, twenty-five feet, that's true.
Yeah, we're not talking about a permit, it's just a pause. Pause it, get a plan in place, then everybody can get behind, and then do the full.
Yeah, Bert just said establish permanent streamside buffer zones of at least fifteen to twenty-five feet on each side of Mill Branch. Fayetteville's streamside plan, and this is what you're referencing, was uses twenty-five feet.
Except for at the Rambles. Have you been to the Rambles in Fayetteville?
Look, yes, I have.
It's right on creekside.
And I'm just going right out from.
Exactly on creekside.
And their chairman of the Fayetteville Streamside Management Committee sent these to me, okay?
Sorry, I interrupted.
Thank you. Not at all. But, but I think from a lot of, that we need to make sure that with spraying that we're in compliance with the requirements stated by the State Plant Board, which I think we'll leave to hear back specifically on that.
Right.
We need to be compliant in that area. The third point was the plan around, which was mentioned in the letter, about the replanting of this area that was taken out. And I think that was something that I heard specifically from the group about how, how we do that. And maybe set a time, factor of having that plan back to us so we can vote on that and get that, get that moved.
You might do make a motion.
Okay, how long is the pause?
I think that we can do a pause until we get a plan in place. Hopefully, we got a plan in two weeks from now, our next meeting. That's what I hope, yeah.
So, one last question. And Mike, I don't want to put you on the spot, I don't want to. As the park, one of the park commissioners, is there any appetite for the park commissioners and the public, whoever public may be, and city staff to come together and say, we agree to this document and this document come back and come?
I, I think a lot could have been accomplished with better communication on everyone's part. I believe that the, the mayor is, is open to communication and should have received communication from each and every one of the city council members. I think better communication from Ken on a personal basis would have been met with a very open, you know, willingness to discuss the issues and come up with a plan. I think everybody has the same goals in mind. I think it's just a lack of communication that's resulted in this, what should have been a ten-minute meeting, turning into a three-hour meeting.
So, that's a yes or a no?
That's a, that, well, court, restate the question.
Is there any appetite for the Parks Commission, city staff, the mayor, and public, whoever public may be, to come together and try to produce this document? Is this what we agree to? We'll bring it back to city council for ordinance resolution, whatever it might be.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And Mike, you know, with the process we all have to obey here, we are limited on what communication we can have. We cannot communicate things to each other. This is how we have to communicate.
No, I'm not talking about in amongst yourselves. I'm talking about each and individu, each individually going to the mayor or city staff and discussing these issues individually, as opposed to getting all this hearsay and back and forth and misunderstandings going on. I don't think there's a prohibition from each and every one of you going to city hall and asking questions of the city staff or the mayor at any time about any issue. Am I wrong?
If you can talk to staff, the mayor would not.
Again, this evening is, mind you to hear all sides, right? To get public input. Because that, in essence, we want to hear from the public to know what direction that you would like to go. Now, mind you, adherence to the master is our duty at this point until new ideas will be brought forth that we would have to vote on and seek resolution to. So, that, that's ultimately what we're here to do.
I think we're all here for the same reason. We just need to do a better job of communicating.
There is a lot of name-calling about this. I did approach the mayor in public meetings and Arbor Board and the Parks Commission. So, that thing that we wanted to not involve him, it's just not true. And the idea that being concerned about the clearing and the spraying, that we're not concerned about people enjoying the park. I've gone to Little Rock maybe four or five times to Ark to lobby for playgrounds and all kinds of stuff. That name-calling is not appropriate. We do need to work together. And I feel these are life and death if some kid gets down there and gets into chemical spraying. When you read that document, as it's printed, it's scary.
So, a lot of things towards my recommendation. And just for the record, I've reached out to each individual council member for this being minus Curtis' number. And I reached out to city staff to ask the genesis of how this, how we got to where we are. So, I know the mayor's mother had some opinions, but for the record, that's a fact.
So, are you recommending a pause?
I think it's foolish, we marshal the troops to have a cleanup day. We're gonna say four days before it starts or something like that. From what Mike said, there's a lot to do.
Well, if, I mean, if the goal is to go down there, weed eat next to the creek, I don't think that we need, we don't need that right now. I think that we need a pause just that. There's a lot of parks to clean up.
Yeah, my opinion is we, we pause, we're still have three factions of this is what I want to do, this is what I've said, this is what I don't want to do, this is what he told me and she told me. Without having that group get together and try to come to some choice and we'll settle. Which could happen between now and city council.
Well, we haven't heard from the mayor. I think we can at least pause, I could go and put a sunset on it. Pause it until our next meeting. That way, we can hear from him and then if we need to extend it, we can.
In, in essence, haven't you heard from the mayor? There was an extensive letter written. I read it.
I, I still have a lot of concern about the volunteer activity that's occurring this weekend, absent the plan that's been approved by council. So, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna suggest that we pause all chemical spraying that is non-targeted within twenty-five feet of riparian zones and pause the clearing of riparian zones until our next meeting.
I'll second that. Where are you around the next meeting?
Council meeting. Council meeting.
But we're really looking for a plan.
Fair. If we need to extend it, we can. But I think if we can get the input from the mayor, he'll be there and get his input. If our concerns are satisfied.
But just to be clear, we're asking for a plan by the meeting, not just to put it off.
That's not what he said.
That's not what he, no.
Let me, we made a motion to pause all non-targeted chemical spraying and.
Up to twenty-five.
And clearing.
Twenty-five feet.
Then, twenty-five feet. Or is it two seconds of that, right?
Public input.
I think pause, I think the idea of a pause till the next meeting makes, seems like a practical step forward, okay? So, from my perspective, that makes sense. I want to reiterate though, and I think I heard this perhaps, that you still need a plan.
That's correct.
Right, okay. And that plan would be, I think, following what Bert's just suggested was of the parties coming together, working through the Parks and Recreation Commission to develop that plan that would be brought back to the city council.
That's what I suggested to you.
I think, I think that, in my opinion, that, that's the right step forward.
So, does city council not meet before Parks Commission meets?
I don't know if you can get that before. You probably can't get that plan before the next meeting, but, but it, it needs to take place.
Mike, we don't know how many people have signed up, the volunteers are just showing up.
I, I really don't know that city staff would have that. I know that there are some high school student, or a high school student that has signed up, but beyond that, I don't know.
There, there's no sign up. We say, we were told to show up.
Is there a sign up?
It's on just third, yeah, there is actually a sign up, and the others.
Oh, I didn't know that. I'd like to ask about it, it was told there wasn't.
Right now, we just got one high school.
I'll have to double check tomorrow, but, um, yes, Abby and I are on the Just served site. So I'll double check tomorrow.
Okay, so, not very many at this point.
But otherwise, yeah, it's been posted on Facebook and it's just kind of show up.
Okay.
Any other public?
I have one other thing. Uh, so we, we've batted around the, the term plan. I just want to clarify for myself that we've already got this comprehensive maintenance plan that was, uh, developed in twenty-twenty-two. It's sixty-two pages. But that the plan now that we're talking about meeting to modify was this one that was the March seventeenth, uh, park maintenance plan with all the spraying. What you guys understand.
That's why the Parks Commission documents.
Two mil park.
There is a sixty-two page.
Right.
Comprehensive plan that was developed.
But that had everything.
And that's hopefully not the one that we're going to try to modify.
Yeah, I would say we's, uh, uh, to your point, Max. This is the plan. That needs to be, the elements of that incorporated into this if there. That's what's your favorite. Twenty-twenty-five master plan. It has to be, that would be the maintenance part of that.
I just didn't want to throw the whole, uh.
Yeah.
Beaver, Beaver Water shit, license plan out. That's all I.
Uh, all those in paper?
Can we restate the motion, please?
Can you just get it, what, what I got now? Um, chemical spraying and clearing within twenty-five feet of Mill Branch Creek. Uh, will be, excuse me, let me turn, uh, uh. Pause all non-targeted chemical spraying and clearing within twenty-five feet of Mill Branch Creek until the next city council meeting.
So does not speak to this suggestion of having the groups together to work on it. The motion did not.
Do you want to add any motion?
That, that's up to you. I personally think we did it. We're trying to plan a place for the park for two weeks at this time.
Don't give us any more.
I'll, I'll amend the motion, uh, to make that contingent. A meeting with public input, um, and the Parks Commission. And city staff.
So you're saying non-targeted spraying? So are you saying that they can spray the hemlock? Even if it's within the twenty-five feet?
No.
No, they can spray the hemlock.
Then that needs to be restated.
They can spray.
Because that's the way it sounds.
Shouldn't be any spraying until we get the license and certification.
Right.
That doesn't mean to get any spraying.
So we're pausing all spraying, not just targeted?
Pause the spraying.
Yeah.
Alright, restate your motion.
Alright, I'm going to try, see. Uh, I'll make a motion, uh, to pause chemical spraying and clearing within twenty-five feet of riparian zones. And this can be picked back up after the planning commission has met with the public and city staff.
Park, park, not planning.
Park commission. Uh, and a plan is going to be presented to council.
Is there a second?
How much I can have?
Any public?
Any public input?
Hearing none.
Alright, hearing none. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right? All those opposed?
I'm staying.
Alright, motion passes. That brings us to public input. Hearing none? Alright, another motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
I was against fifteen in the first.
Kim.
You don't know.
I'm not a fifteen man, I'm not by anything. It's, it's, it is what it is.
We got, we got, we got. We got. It's got me ready to. I was trying to jump on you.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of waivers.
It's unfortunate. Any of the point, it's, it was really. Ashram.
I will, I will.
No, it's the, it's the inside. Well, there's several. One that comes off, it's coming, come off the ground, goes downhill. We're not talking about. Yeah, never, there's never been, we're talking about.
That would be terrible, I mean, that would be.
Well, I mean, I've always gathered, is this there?
I, I mean, yeah, I've been.
Good, I tell you what, don't get old. Because when you go to stand duck, you're literally like. Ah, lock. I don't know, I guess. I, I'm going to come down. I'll be there.
Yeah, I, I need to get rid of this pain that I'm, it'll be much probably.
No, I, no, my brother-in-law said it wasn't.
That makes me feel better.
No, I mean. He had a little bit after Mary, but that was it.
I was going to hold on to it for you, Brian, in case you didn't hear it.
I appreciate it.
I was at the park and ordered a fire.
Dragged it there real quick.
I got a few different names, I'm hoping I didn't. I got body cam, I got the bones, so I'm hoping.
I'm up there, so there's a new shoe to get.
Okay.